I would like to call this meeting to order. It is April 30, 2020. And this is a meeting of the Assembly Budget and Finance Committee of the whole, a special meeting. We are noticed from noon to 1:00 p.m. And if we could go ahead and start by introducing ourselves. Ms. Camacho, would you call the roll, please?
Yes. Ms. Allard.
I see Ms. Allard on the attendee list.
Here.
Okay. Mr. Constant.
Here.
Ms. Kennedy.
Here.
Ms. LaFrance.
Here.
Mr. Perez Verdia.
Here.
Mr. Peterson.
Present.
Ms. Quinn Davidson.
Here.
Mr. Rivera.
Here.
Mr. Weddleton.
Here.
Ms. Zalatell.
Here.
Okay, let me go back to Mr. Constant. Okay, we have everybody but Mr. Constant, I believe.
Thank you, Ms. Camacho. Thank you all for being here and joining this call. I assume we also have members of the administration. Mr. Wilbur, Mr. Bockenstedt.
Madam Chair, this is Lance Wilbur. I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilbur. Mr. Bockenstedt, are you on the call? Okay, maybe he'll be joining here in a few minutes. Hopefully, you all have a copy of the agenda. And actually, to put yourself in the queue, if you would just go ahead and let me know through the chat, if you're having any problems with that, you can text me at 907-351-7199. But we'll try to primarily use the chat. On the agenda, we have one item listed, and that's CARES Act funding. And I would like to make a change. We're going to add another item, Emergency Operations Center, a funding request. And Mr. Wilbur will be taking us through that one first. We'll then go into a discussion of CARES Act funding. And Mr. Bockenstedt will be doing a presentation. We expect to be joined sometime, maybe halfway through the call, by Mills Andreessen, who's the Executive Director of the Alaska Municipal League, who's been very engaged with CARES Act funding. In fact, there's an email that he had sent that has been shared with members. And also, that document, along with other materials, are available on the website under the Assembly Committee Budget and Finance page. I did want to note that when we get to the CARES discussion, we had invited representatives from the state OMB Legislative Finance and the congressional delegation to join to answer questions. However, since the guidelines for CARES Act funding are still taking shape, and we'll get more into that, fully into that with Mr. Bockenstedt's presentation, those individuals thought that they could best advise us later, after the rules have been affirmed up. So we won't have those folks joining us. Before we move to our first item, I want to ask members if there are any other items that you wanted to add to the agenda for this meeting? Okay, so we'll go ahead and get started. Mr. Wilbur, if you could take us through that request for funding from the Emergency Operations Center?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Assembly. I wanted to take a, I was asking Chair LaFrance if I could just have a couple of minutes to talk about the administration's request for our, a second request to support the emergency, the funding as relates to the Emergency Operations Center. So on Tuesday night, we had a laid-on-the-table item for an additional $10 million. That would be, in addition to the $3 million that the Assembly had approved back on April 14th. And as the administration and the Assembly would be scheduled to take action on that next Tuesday, which will be May 5th. As the administration brought forward its initial $3 million request, I mentioned then that, similar to the earthquake, when expenses are being charged to an event, an emergency event, for the earthquake, we set up a separate fund. And we populate that fund with money out of our cash reserves. And then, as we get reimbursement, we replenish our reserves. We did that for the earthquake. As FEMA funding is coming in to replace the earthquake funds, that's the mechanism we use. We use the same process for COVID. The difference is, for the earthquake, we asked for money one time, based on a pretty good estimate of what the total amount of damage would be. There may have been an opportunity where we need to increase that. For this request, using the same mechanism, the same tracking process that we did for the earthquake, we told the Assembly, we do not know how much this is going to cost us, and we do not know how long we will need to do it. So in April, we asked for an initial $3 million. And where we are right now in the expenses and the encumbrances, so if we sign a contract for $500,000 for something, we basically secure part of that $3 million to be funded out of the COVID emergency fund. Since that, and since the state of the emergency occurred in March, what happened was, if the occurrences, if, as expenses were being incurred by departments or the Emergency Operations Center, they were consuming their own operating budget until this fund could be established. And then, we took those dollars out of the operating fund, their budgeted operating dollars, and moved them into this fund. Where we are right now, as of last week, we have consumed either through spending or total encumbrances, up to that $3 million. As a matter of fact, we have encumbered some contracts we know are gonna move, go forward, that are in excess of that $3 million. So as those invoices are coming in, they will not be able to be paid unless it, unless we add more money to the fund. So right now, the total amount of money spent, and the total amount of contract obligations that we've had, is at about $10 million total. So we have basically spent all of, all but the $3 million in order to continue to pay invoices without consuming departments' operating budgets. We need to replenish the fund. When we did this estimation, we are looking at all of the encumbrances that have been on the reports that you received, the latest one you received last Tuesday night is a laid-on-the-table item, and previously. So we, we know that we can cover all of those expenses with this $10 million. And we projected all the way through the month of May. If, and so the total amount of money in the fund would be $13 million. We know that we've got, at least right now, $10 million of it sort of committed. So that gives us the month of May for an additional $3 million. I'm gonna stop right there if there's any questions, and then I'm just gonna add one more piece to it. Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Wilbur. We have a question from Ms. Kennedy.
Yes, Ms. Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Wilbur. So you were telling us that the amount that has either been spent or encumbered has basically been on those lists at this point.
Correct.
Knowing what we know at this point, and we'll probably have more discussion about this anyway, it, do we believe that all of those expenses are basically going to be covered either with FEMA or with CARES funding? Can you speculate?
The answer is, the answer is yes.
Great, thank you.
The other thing that, yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Kennedy, for the question. The other thing is, is as many of you know, any of the, outside the encumbrances, which was mostly contractual services, the labor costs to support the EOC are also part of this total dollar amount. So we made a projection in through the month of May, and based on the current payroll cost to support the Emergency Operations Center, we projected out for at least another four weeks. Now, so we are pretty comfortable with the number that we have to cover the encumbrances that we made, the contracts that we made, and the labor that we have for the remainder of the month of May, with the total of $13 million, the three you've already approved and this additional 10. If there, and the reason that we didn't ask for anything more is, this is the amount that we know that we need to cover our commitments, and the amount of the labor that we anticipate spending through May. We did some projections in June, but we didn't include those here, and there's a couple reasons why. For example, the shelter contract that we encumbered, and the Ortho-Alaska contract we have, I believe both of those contracts are for six months of service. So we won't spend all of that money. So there's no real, no need to provide more than the additional $10 million. But if we have maybe some more expenses on the labor side, or we get a new contract in the next month that we hadn't planned on, we will have enough money inside the fund to cover those anticipated expenses. So I know that the Emergency Operations Center is eager to get this done. The reason that we laid it on the table and did not, and were not able to get it to you earlier in the month is that the fund was looking pretty good. It's just that the invoices all, there was a bunch of invoices that came in all at one time, and that, that consumed pretty much all but about a quarter million dollars of the original three. And we know that they need more than that right now to meet some of the obligations and commitments they've made. So we would appreciate your support Tuesday night, and obviously, if you have any questions, please share those with me. As Mr. Bockenstedt mentioned, on Tuesday night, in addition to the list of encumbrances that Purchasing did in the Assembly Information Report, we are working on some more detail about what each of those expenses were for.
Thank you, Mr. Wilbur. We do have a question from Mr. Perez Verdia.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank, thank, thank you, Madam Chair. My question, just a clarification, I think I heard you say that the, for instance, the contract you used as an example was a six-month con, contract. And so the funding you're talking about now is, is to fully fund that contract. Is that, is that correct? And so that, that you're not necessarily talking about expenses that would happen through May as it relates to that contract, you're talking about all of the expenses related to that contract for the full six months?
That is correct. And so what I, that is exactly correct. We are counting for that. So there's, if, the, the amount or the, the level, while we have a contract for six months, we've only been expending for two.
Right.
So we do expect that, and that's why we didn't ask for more money, because we know that all of that is not gonna get consumed, but we do have it covered in this $13 million. You are correct, Mr. Perez Verdia.
Madam Chair, one follow-up question. Just, just so I fully understand this, so the $10 million is for all known expenses at this point, and, and how far out?
The month of May.
Through the month of May, but you're, but you have a contract for the next six months. So I guess what I'm trying, trying, trying to understand is, you've already projected out that six months, and that's a part of this, this cost. Is that true for other expenses? And have you set sort of a timeline for, for how far out you're projecting costs?
So we are doing that. Some of those contracts are sort of one-time procurement purchases. Some of those things, we, based on the contracts that we signed for them, there's, I don't, my recollection, the ones I recall reading, we only have two or three that actually go into the summer months, and that's the sheltering, I think the non-critical transport, and the Ortho-Alaska. The others are procurements that are being consumed in the short term. I will verify that.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Perez Verdia. Do any other members have questions? Okay, I don't see any texts or anyone in the chat. Thank you, Mr. Wilbur, for that information. And if anyone has any questions, please direct them to Mr. Wilbur.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Via email. Okay. Is Mr. Bockenstedt on the call? Okay, great. We're gonna go ahead and move into the second item on our agenda, CARES Act funding. And just a couple notes here before Mr. Bockenstedt starts his presentation. As I mentioned earlier, the materials that have been shared with members, and that includes the Treasury guidance and a document from the State of Alaska on COVID-19 funding, response funding, those materials are available on the website under the Assembly section, Committees, Budget and Finance. And this meeting is a continuation of the discussion that we started in previous meetings about CARES Act funding, specifically the Governor's proposal to allocate 45% of Alaska's portion directly to communities, which means 156 million has been proposed for Anchorage. We have been told and have heard that the guidelines are expected to change, especially the revenue replacement piece, and Mr. Bockenstedt will be addressing that in his presentation. Given that we are expecting more changes surrounding the guidelines, and one goal of this meeting is to get an understanding right now of what is permitted as far as spending for the funding. The next piece, the question of what should we do with the funding, will be largely shaped, of course, by what we are permitted to do. For example, will we be limited to using the funds only for expenses from COVID-19 or for broader applications to address impacts? So we don't have the answers yet, although Mr. Bockenstedt maybe shed some light on it. We might be able to throw out some ideas during this meeting, depending how much time this part takes. But we will be taking up that question of what should we be spending the CARES Act funding on later, in later meetings, possibly in the Rules Committee. So with that, we'll go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Bockenstedt.
Well, thank you. I don't have much in the way of a presentation, because as I think I've said, we're still kind of waiting for additional guidance, that what we have heard repeatedly from folks is imminent. As early as next week, Congress, Treasury might be issuing additional guidance that, in our view, will more closely track with what the true intent of Congress was in how that funding should be spent. I will say that this morning, the House Finance Committee had a hearing where I provided comments, along with a number of other communities from around the state about the, the need for the Governor and the Legislature to quickly appropriate these dollars for a whole host of reasons. The one aspect, or the one part that I will highlight from my comments to them is around what our view is of what the true intent of Congress was. And I will be happy to share my full written statement that I provided to House Finance, to the Assembly. But I will just quickly go over a small section of it, which is, there have been a number of letters that have been sent by both sides of the aisle, in the U.S. Senate and the U.S. House, to Secretary Mnuchin about what the true intent of this coronavirus relief fund to states and local governments is for. And I pulled a couple of particularly poignant parts from both Democratic and Republican letters that have been sent. And I'll quote just a couple of them, which is, in one of them, it was, quote, "In the midst of an economic collapse, the intent of the entire CARES Act is to provide flexible help to a wide range of Americans. To prevent the flexible use of these relief funds is a choice that is neither required nor intended by law." And then, in a letter that was led by and written by Alaska Senators Murkowski and Sullivan, and signed by about half of the Republican caucus, they said, quote, "The purpose of the coronavirus relief fund is to provide flexibility to states and local governments to fill the gaps in economic response inevitably left by the one-size-fits-all programs." And I went on to say that from these statements, from the administration's perspective, it's abundantly clear that the intent of Congress is to allow for these funds to replace lost revenue by local governments. And that is legislators, everyone that I was speaking to should know how important it is that the intent be honored by the executive branch, and that congressional intent here is very clear. This was not partisan legislation that passed on a partisan party-line vote. It was a $2.2 trillion stimulus bill, the largest that has passed in U.S. history, and it passed unanimously. So intent was very clear. And I will just further say that, in our view, the intent behind this is only strengthened because many of the direct expenditures that Mr. Wilbur and, and we have discussed with you and provided to you, that we have incurred to date, are already eligible for reimbursement through FEMA. The CARES Act funding might need to supplement that, to the extent that FEMA does not reimburse 100% of some of these costs. But it is not, and it is incorrect, to assume that the CARES Act is and must be the sole source of all of the reimbursement for the COVID response. So with that, I will be happy to take questions, but I will caution that it is my understanding, and what I am hearing, is that sometime next week, Treasury is expected to release additional guidance, and it is, I think, everyone's hope that that guidance will be much more broad and allow a much wider range of activities for local governments across the country.
Thank you, Mr. Bockenstedt. We do have a question from Mr. Dunbar. Mr. Dunbar?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And you know, I, I had, when this Budget Committee was first scheduled, I was hopeful that we'd have a clear sense of what we could spend this on, so that we could have a broader discussion about what should we spend this on, and have a brainstorming session, and maybe that's still appropriate. You know, we talk about different things that this could potentially go to, because that's gonna be a big matter of discussion if we're talking about $150 million. But talking about what it can be spent on, we received an email, I think it was forwarded by Ms. LaFrance, from Mills Andreessen, that was summarizing what his understanding of the presentation was. And in there, yeah, there it is, from AML, I'm fairly certain it says that it cannot be used to replace local lost revenues. So I understand that's what you might be advocating for. To me, when, when I hear lost revenues in our context, the thing that really jumps out at me is the bed tax, right? We're talking tens of millions of dollars, and we're gonna get almost none of it. So two, I guess, I guess two questions. One, were we thinking that the CARES Act would replace the bed tax, or could it be FEMA money? And then, two, what happens if we can't replace the bed tax? I mean, what, what would we, what would our response be if we could not backfill the bed tax? Would we have to raise property taxes to fill that gap? Or would we have to start, you know, laying off, well, for, if it's gonna be municipal employees, then we're talking police, firefighters, road, you know, road maintenance, that kind of thing?
Yeah, really, really great questions. And to answer your first question, the intent or our thinking is that the bed tax is not FEMA reimbursable, that this is something that would be through the CARES Act. And, you know, obviously, I mean, everyone can read the Treasury guidance, and I'm not trying to disagree with what the Treasury guidance says. I think what our view is, and the view of a vast majority of the U.S. Congress that are responsible for passing this law, and what the intent behind it is, is that their intent was that it be made available for lost revenue from local governments. So that is what I am basing my view on, and saying that, you know, in my view, the interpretation of the Treasury Department is wrong. And they're applying this in a overly narrow way that was not the true intent of Congress, and that is something that is reflected in a whole host of letters that have been sent to the Treasury Secretary, trying to get him to, you know, change the, the position on that. To the second question, I, I think that is, that is the issue that every local government is going to be faced with. Unfortunately, the bed tax revenue that we receive is outside the tax cap. So if we are not able to replace that revenue with this, we cannot raise property taxes to replace it. So what does that mean? That means that whatever we do not collect and cannot raise through other means outside the tax cap, that there will be a significant reduction in services and the number of employees that the municipality has.
Thank you.
Any follow-ups, Mr. Dunbar?
And, and I just, I just think, I just think it, it's sort of, as we, no, no, I'm hoping that doesn't come to pass, but then we start thinking seriously about, what is it actually, what does it actually mean when you reduce municipal employees? Who are the, the employees you're reducing? And the majority of our workforce, what do they do? They are police, fire, road maintenance. That's, that's our actual employees. We have certain fixed costs that we can't deal with. Our employees are in those kind of departments. So, thank you.
Yeah, and just, just a follow-up of, just a follow-up if I could, two points. One, you know, it's, lost revenue is, is not a word that appears specifically in the CARES Act. But again, you know, from our perspective and the perspective of Congress, a plain-text reading of the law, I think, leads to the logical conclusion that lost or delayed revenues are a direct cost created by the coronavirus that were never accounted for in any budget. And, you know, that is where we're coming from. And then, to the, the point that Assembly Member Dunbar was just making, I would just reiterate that, if you remember back to the presentations that I gave to the community, a little over 70% of our budget goes to either voter-approved issues that require us to pay debt, and, and make sure that we do not lose our AAA bond rating. And then, 50%, as he said, goes towards police, fire, and street maintenance. So roughly 70% of our budget is tied up in just those items.
Thank you, Mr. Bockenstedt. We have two other members in the queue, first Ms. Zalatell, and then Mr. Perez Verdia.
Madam Chair, sorry to interrupt before the question comes. For those that are watching this, this is Chris Shu, the Director of Economic Development. For those watching the screen, that Mr. Wilbur put up, this, this speaks to the topic that Mr. Bockenstedt just covered. And so everything that he described, as far as intent for, from Congress, et cetera, is accurate, and it appears that there's a discrepancy in what Treasury is, is promoting. So the item on your screen currently, and I suspect this is where AML's interpretation comes from, this was the initial guidance letter issued by Treasury, and the, the enumerated lines, one, two, and three, is, is where we believe Treasury is misinterpreting the intent of the CARES Act thus far. So that, that's why the screen changed, I just wanna make sure that members understood what they were looking So that, that's why the screen changed. I just want to make sure that members understood what they were looking at. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shudie. Ms. Zelatell, you have a question?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for sending out those documents earlier today. In a brief overview that I had to go through those, I really appreciated where the documents broke down by area, possible areas of expenditure. And as we start to think about how we will potentially utilize CARE Act, CARES Act funding, it'd be great to start to get some ideas within those categories, or if there are different things that the administration is thinking would fall in those categories that we will need to utilize these funds for, so we can start to put our head around what are the different options and where the administration might be anticipating some of their needs. I just kind of wanted to flag that because I know there are different conversations going on in various sectors around these funds, and I just want to make sure that we're all having a really open and transparent discussion around where we might expect funding to be. I know we all probably saw the email today from Julie Sape, and then I received another one around homelessness funding. So I just want to make sure we're having a really great exchange of information because it's going to be a lot. And it might be feeling otherwise somewhat fractured amongst multiple different types of meetings, committee meetings, and work sessions on Rules Committee. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Zelatell. Was there anyone from the administration who wanted to comment?
I would just say that I absolutely agree with all of her comments that, you know, we want to make sure that we have these conversations in a transparent way when we finally know what the actual final guidance looks like and what the actual final amount is. I will also add that from everyone's comments from around the state that testified in front of House Finance today, there was a lot of concern around what the expectations were from everyone's perspective on what the money should actually be used for, provided that there is broader guidance. And two examples that I will give you, you know, the biggest one being it is unclear right now if school bond debt reimbursement is going to be expected to be covered, you know, from, from this money at a certain point, or, you know, community assistance, or some other items that were vetoed by the governor earlier this year. So that is something that every community raised as a major concern and something that they hoped that the legislature would fix and not force communities to use this money for that, which everyone, I think, agreed is money that is supposed to be used, or hopefully will be used to provide for funding for lost revenue as well as additional items to hopefully, you know, provide a couple of the items that were thrown out there as some sort of potentially rental relief fund or small business fund for, for small businesses and to get this money into the, into the community. So all that is to say that we look forward to having this conversation, and we agree with Assembly Members Zalatell that we want to have it in a transparent way.
Madam Chair, could I ask a quick follow-up?
Yes, Ms. Zelatell, go ahead.
Thank, thank you, and thank you, Mr. Bockenstedt. My one concern is, as we wait for the, everything to be final, final, is that we are losing the opportunity to have at least an idea of where we would like to utilize these funds, and then we can kind of run that up against whatever the final, final rules are. And that might fluctuate for a little while. So I guess that's just my way of saying, if, you know, I don't want that to hinder the discussion. If it's ultimately that we can't do something we were hoping to do, whether that's would be unfortunate, but bed tax-related or something like that, I think we need to start preparing and having the conversations, and then we can kind of compare what we would like to do with what the final rules might be. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Zelatell. We have two people in the queue, Mr. Perez Verdia, and then Mr. Rivera. Mr. Perez Verdia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My, my questions sort of fall along with Ms. Zalatell's, and in that, is the administration currently working up scenarios for different avenues of where this may or may not go and the impacts of that? And I guess I'm, I'm concerned, as I've heard others speak, of this, of us waiting too long. And also, when we do have the information of having a really difficult, unruly conversation that makes it challenging for us to get to something tangible. So I guess the question is, is the administration working up those kinds of scenarios now? The if, then, if this, then that? Or are they planning to do those as part of this process so that we can have a very thoughtful and transparent conversation?
Through the, through the chair, Assembly Member Perez Verdia, this is Jason Bockenstedt again. Yes, we are, we are looking at all of those. We are actively having our Finance and Treasury Department kind of look at different scenarios on what the potential lost revenue is if this happens, or, or if we get a slight uptick. So we are looking at all of those. Nothing has been, I think, finalized yet. There's, it's, as everyone can probably understand, this is something that we've never experienced before, so there's not a, a great way to calculate it. So we are, to a certain extent, you know, looking at, you know, what the 2008, 2009 Great Recession looked like in terms of decreased revenue and going back even further to the mid 80s when oil prices dropped significantly. So we're in the process of looking through a number of different scenarios. And as soon as, you know, those numbers are, you know, more trued up and we have better confidence that that's what this looks like, we will certainly share that with, you know, the body and the community at large, that we can have this conversation because it is going to be an important one.
Thank you. I, I look forward to seeing those and just would add that, that, that's the, you know, that's the process that many organizations are going through now. They are developing a variety of scenarios for, you know, what, what they can and should, should do. And the sooner that those can come to us, I think the better the conversation we can have will be. So thanks, 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 Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Perez Verdia. Before we go on to Mr. Rivera, I want to note that we were joined by Mr. Constant at 12:36. Mr. Rivera?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate Ms. Zalatell and Mr. Perez Verdia's comments, and agree that we should be doing this in an open and transparent way. And all the conversations that I have had, either with the administration, Ms. LaFrance, or Ms. Quinn Davidson, all act on that same, those same value sets of making sure whatever we do is open and transparent. My message to the administration has been sort of pretty clear on this, that the more that we can collaborate on, on these dollars, the better. And, you know, the mayor has committed that whenever money gets spent, it's, it's coming to the Assembly. Nothing is going to get spent and approved without it coming to the Assembly. I also agree with the sentiments that we shouldn't wait too long, and that's been, as Ms. LaFrance alluded to, one of the reasons why we are likely going to have the much broader picture discussion of these funds in Rules Committee, which I think is a, is a better way for us to have these bigger picture discussions. And look at it as Ms. Zalatell had stated on earlier at a 50,000-foot level, not necessarily based on guidelines, but based on values and needs that we're seeing in our community. So these are all things that we're looking at, because I agree, if we wait until the guidelines come out, I think we have missed an opportunity to have some important discussions amongst ourselves and with the community at large. So I would look to seeing invites in your calendars sometime soon so that we can begin having that broader discussion. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera. Are there any other questions or comments from members?
Madam Chair, Christopher Constant here.
Mr. Constant?
Yeah, I'm sorry that I missed the first part of the meeting. It's quite a busy meeting for me. I'm sure you've already discussed it. I just want to check in on this, that there's the battle between the governor and the legislature, and the fact that the legislature is asserting that the governor can't spend really any of those funds, especially not the portions for local government until the legislature convenes. Did we have any conversation about an outreach plan to the legislature?
Mr. Bockenstedt, do you want to address that one? Or Mr. Constant, were you talking about from the Assembly side?
Well, it's to the committee, but also it's fine to hear what the administration is doing, but knowing that that kind of reported was happening today, it certainly raises the specter that the legislature will do things either to benefit us or not, or to harm us. It's hard to say. So I want to understand what our approach is to that body.
Through the, through the chair, Assembly Member Constant. As I mentioned at the start, I testified in front of the House Finance Committee this morning about this and, and other items. We are in, I don't want to say frequent, but we are in contact with members of the legislature, reiterating that it is important that they approve this funding and get it out to local governments as quickly as possible. I'm not going to step into the fight between the governor and the legislature on this. That's something that they are going to have to work out themselves. I think the message that we are, we are pushing to everyone at the state level is the sooner and quicker that you can approve this in whatever way that, you know, they feel appropriate, that they need to do so.
Thank you, Mr. Bockenstedt. Any follow-up, Mr. Constant?
Yeah, I just would offer that that's important, and we should be, maybe as we move through the Rules Committee process, inviting some members of the legislature into our conversation, or either the Legislative Committee or some other delegation from the Assembly also be prepared to work that line of communication so that it's through, of course, the mayor's office, but also supported by our legislative body.
Thank you, Mr. Constant. We've got a question or comment from Ms. Zelatell. Ms. Zelatell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a mechanics question, and I don't know if this is for Mr. Bockenstedt or Mr. Wilbur, if he's available, but will these funds go into their own fund and kind of, we will create like a budget for this particular amount of money, or, I'm just trying to kind of put my head around ultimately what this might look like as we, as the funds come into the community and they are ready for appropriation?
So I will start, Madam Chair, Ms. Zalatell. So we will be keeping track of not only the source of the funds, if they're coming in from, if they're CARES Act types of funds that are coming through a particular federal agency to the municipality, or if there are funds coming from the state, we'll, I think we'll be able to track those things. The other part is that some of these funds, we do anticipate when the rules are written, they are going to be, some of them will be pretty narrow, some of them will be pretty flexible, some of them will allow us to use on them on operating in capital. And as we get some definiti in those things, we will be able to know if a particular activity or a particular project was supported with either operating or bond-proofed dollars, or if it was supported with CARES Act funds. So, yeah, because we need to know how much we're getting and where it was allocated. And if we have some opportunity to spend it on a variety of things, and there is no requirement for tracking, then we can make that decision when we know that.
And this is Jason again. This is Jason again. I'll just add on to that, that, and Mr. Wilbur can correct me if I'm wrong, but to a certain extent, I think it will depend on how the state distributes it to us as well. Under the governor's current proposal, and again, don't know if that's what's ultimately going to happen, but under the governor's current proposal, the vast majority of this will come through what we typically recognize as the community assistance or revenue sharing program. So it would be unclear to me at this point if, if it comes through that way, are we required to kind of put it into the same revenue bucket that we have created for the revenue and community assistance that we receive from the state currently? Or if we would be able to have the flexibility to say, we want to create a completely different account so that there's maximum transparency into this money?
Thank you, Mr. Bockenstedt. Any follow-up, Ms. Zelatell?
No, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. So before we move on, I don't see any other questions or members in the chat to be added to the queue. We have been joined, or were joined a while ago by Nils Andreassen from the Alaska Municipal League. And Nils, you've been listening in on the conversation. Is there anything that you would like to add that you think would be helpful?
Thank you. No, I appreciate the deliberation that, you know, this body is undertaking. The, we have had conversations this week, and I sent a message to members yesterday to this effect. You know, not just our, yeah, and this is what we sent out. We had direct conversations with the OMB Director, Neil Steininger, you know, here in Juneau about what OMB is planning. And, you know, in terms of their, you know, what they're expecting to get out to local governments would be, you know, one, a contract that Department of Law is working on right now, right now, that requires local governments to follow Treasury guidance. Two, a monthly or other types of reporting on those funds that are consistent with the six buckets identified in the Treasury guidance. That's what they're working on. And, and then, you know, we were glad to be on a call with Treasury officials that expanded on and answered questions about the Treasury guidance. So the rest of, you know, what I included in outreach to members yesterday focused on new information beyond what's in the Treasury guidance as to what would be an allowable expenditure and not. And I think we're all in this space right now where a lot, a lot of things are up for interpretation, not just by Treasury, but by the governor's office, by 60 individual legislators, by 165 cities and boroughs, and municipal attorneys and finance officers. All of us are trying to decipher what exactly this means, and whether, whether your interpretation is narrowly or broadly construed in relation to that guidance, you, I think, members, local governments take on risk or create risk for the state that will either be acceptable or not acceptable. And, and that's, I think, part of the challenge that we're all going to have right now is everybody's thinking about this in terms of liability on the one hand and benefit on the other. And, you know, until we've got clearer guidance and things on paper from Treasury and a contract and reporting requirements in hand from OMB, a lot of this is, you know, is conjecture. So I've been concerned, the reason I sent things out yesterday is because members are already planning on budgeting these things, and some are already talking about spending them. And before we get to that point, we really need to know what, what these can be spent on. I liked the comment earlier about, I mean, everybody should be coming up with a plan, and, you know, a plan based on narrow, narrow interpretation versus broad interpretation would be helpful so that once these funds do become available, you'll know exactly what steps you can take.
Thank you, Mr. Andreassen. Does anyone? Thank you, Mr. Andreessen. Does anyone, excuse me, have any questions? Or comments? Okay, I don't have anyone else in the queue. Since there are no more questions or comments, we'll go ahead to audience participation. I'm looking through the participant list. 907-268-5483. Did you want to provide public testimony? If so, you'll have three minutes. Okay, 907-388-2958. Would you like to provide testimony?
Hi, this is Dean. I'm sorry, I think that number you just read is the number for the interpreter that I'm wishing to listen to this meeting, so I don't have any comment.
Oh, sorry about that.
No, good to call up the number. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any members of the public who dialed into this call who would like to speak? Anybody? Give a minute for meeting. And Desiree, if you see someone on the participant list I may have missed. I see someone is texting. Okay. Okay, well, if there are no members of the public who wish to speak, and there are no other questions or comments from Assembly members, then we will go ahead and adjourn. Last call, anyone? Okay, thank you all for coming. We are adjourned.